Boe.
Bowler.
Bowler.
He's not here.
He's not here. Michael.
You speak up a minute.
Oh, sorry. Michael Sharon?
Yes, Mike Sharon Hebron.
Uh, Joseph.
Lottie Hebron.
Kristen Emerson.
Kirsten Erlinson. Andover.
Pam Farrington.
Pam Farrington Marlborough.
Uh, Carrie Frulino.
No, he's not.
Uh, Drew Golfen.
Drew Golfen Marlborough.
Uh, Gabriel Marquez.
Uh, Gabe Marks Hebron.
Amy Romanchuk.
Amy Romanchuk Marlborough.
Scott Soyet.
Scott Soyet Andover.
And Heather Summer.
Heather Summer Hebron.
Everybody stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands on its mission under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Give you the phonetic. Spelling's last name.
I thought you did pretty well.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so that brings us to the public comment portion. Um, Hebron, Andover, and Marlborough, community engagement in attendance at BOE public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. So is there anybody that would like to make public comments? Just state your name and your, and your.
Uh, my name is Kim Kane. I live in Gulfland and Hebron. I am a resident. I am a teacher here at Ram Middle School, and I'm the building representative for the REA at the middle school. Um, so I see that the contract is up for a vote between REA and Region Eight uh, for possible actions tonight, and I hope that you will all vote for it. Um, not only was it agreed to by the REA negotiation team, but by the board representatives that you sent, um, and they've shown strong sort of support for it, and so have the teachers. They strongly support it. It is a contract that values what we bring to the district, and we thank you for that, and brings us more in line, in line with the surrounding towns. Even the ones that we serve, so that's great. Thank you to the REA negotiation team and to the Board of Ed negotiation team for creating this contract in a truly collaborative and cooperative manner. Everything I've heard uh, was that it was an extremely smooth process, uh, which is lovely to hear. We appreciate your work in creating this fair and respectful contract, and again, I hope that you'll vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, yeah, Dawn, Mike Bowler joined remotely, if we can note that, please.
Um, is there anybody else that would like to make public comment? Anybody online? Okay. So that will bring us to, um, any additions or deletions of agenda items for, for tonight. Okay. And the student representatives' reports.
I do want to start soon.
Uh, fully back into the swing of things after winter break in the middle school. Any students taking high school classes took their midterms exams last week. Uh, the middle school band chorus and jazz band are doing their final preparations for the winter concert coming up. The winter concert will be February fifth. On February seventh is high school transition day for the eighth graders. They get tours and presentations to the high school. And finally, last Friday was the beginning of semester two and quarter three for the middle school.
Thank you. Um, from my perspective, I'm not sure, like, or I have only one thing to say. Um, just the start and finish of midterms for the whole fit, I mean, the whole, um, high school. And now just easing back into the second semester.
Second semester has gone pretty smoothly, as they say, no news is good news, so we haven't had a lot of stuff to do. But, um, math team, uh, junior varsity is this Thursday, and then varsity is next Thursday. Um, the art field trip is January thirty first. Um, as we said, um, midterms and second semester, um, have just started, so we'll see how that goes. A lot of seniors are excited, you know, to finally be done, um, in June, so we're all, you know, pushing, getting that last push. Um, colleges and college applications are, you know, some, some of them are coming back, but most of them are coming up in March, so in the next couple of meetings, I'll hopefully highlight some, you know, good news from some students. Um, Eastern Region Honors Ensembles happened a couple of weeks ago, and Ski and Snowboard Club has had continuous meetings, you know, with the snow and everything. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Okay, that, uh, this BOE chair report, just a couple of things. Um, we started out January third with the Cabe Legislative Breakfast, which was held, um, in the library at the high school. It was, I found it really interesting. Drew was there, Scott was there. Just some of the topics that are impacting the different school districts. And where they feel our elected officials could be a little bit more helpful. Um, at the same time, we had, uh, the journalism class covered the meeting. And a couple of the students came. It was part of their midterm exam, and they submitted the story to the River East. I don't know if everybody saw this or not. I brought it. You could pass it around, but that's also part of Collins' efforts to put something in the River East once a month after a board meeting to share some of the more positive stuff that's happening at the school. I think there's so many things that, that are happening here that we need to tell that story more publicly. Um, also attended the family open house for the Columbia students, which I thought was great. Uh, you know, I've had a child go through the school system. I have one in it now, and I learned an awful lot, um, at the open house. I'm kind of wondering why my children aren't taking more advantage of all the opportunities that are here. But it was a great turnout. Um, I think you had expected like twenty-five.
About twenty-five.
Twenty-five families, and it seemed like, you know, there were plenty of people that attended, so hopefully we'll have a good result on, on students choosing Ram. Um, and I think that's it for me.
So I just have a few things. Uh, yeah, I was gonna mention the Cabe Legislative Breakfast. It was a really good experience. I'm glad that, um, it was able to work out, that we were able to host. Uh, the way that it works is that school districts that are a part of the different regions have to volunteer to host those breakfasts. Um, and I just thought it was a great opportunity to get some of our local people here, and then obviously just make it easy for our board members to attend, so I appreciate Drew and Scott and, um, and you Heather being able to be there. And again, the, the story by the students was awesome. Uh, you, you, Heather is making me step out of my comfort zone by talking to reporters. I don't do it often, so she's, she's, she's pushing me.
He reminds me, and he doesn't like it every time.
Uh, but no, we're, we're very fortunate. We have a great relationship with the River East. Uh, Mike, if you're listening, I appreciate all you do. Um, so you, you noted, uh, one of the events. We have had several events over the past few weeks to promote Ram High School as a school of choice for Columbia students. Um, you, you mentioned the open house here that we had at Ram. Uh, that was for both families and students who wanted to attend. We had, we asked people to RSVP. This was the one that had initially been scheduled for December and had to be postponed because of a snow delay. Uh, it actually worked out to our benefit, because I think initially about ten families had registered to attend at the, uh, the event in December. And, um, Dr. Rizgell and I have talked about, well, I think next year we'll make sure we schedule it initially in January, because maybe the pre-holiday hecticness of people's schedules, uh, maybe would have limited the number of people that attended, but it was a great turnout. We got a ton of positive feedback. We had students who were giving tours, so it was a, about a twenty-minute, twenty-five-minute presentation that Penny had in her admin team gave. Uh, it was a PowerPoint slide deck that kind of walked, uh, families through all that Ram has to offer. And I think that one of the most valuable parts of the evening, not taking anything away from the message that Penny and her team delivered, was we had student volunteers who were here, and, uh, the, they, the families that had, had come were broken up into smaller groups and were given, um, tours of the entire facility, um, by students. And we encourage families and the students from Columbia to ask questions, talk to the kids who are giving you the tour. Um, and we did things like, uh, students from our business program from DECA opened up the school store and talked a little bit about DECA and that experience. And again, it was just really, really positive. So that was one event that we did. Uh, we, we also, was it the next day, or it was shortly after? We hosted. Yeah, so the following week, we hosted students. We had all the eighth graders from Columbia come to Ram High School, during the school day, uh, as a field trip. It's something that, uh, Columbia sets up for their students to, to visit all of their high schools of choice. And, uh, we want them to obviously make well-informed decisions about where, where they'd like to come. We recognize that, you know, if they didn't come to the evening event with mom and dad or, or, uh, or their family, it meant that maybe there was a, you know, it could have been a scheduling conflict or whatever, so um, we hosted them, and, and a little bit of a different format. We really tried to make it more student-centered. Didn't put up any PowerPoint slideshows and speak to slides. What, uh, Penny did was arrange for a panel of students to, um, just talk about their experiences. They were asked questions and share your insights on a variety of topics. They responded to those questions. We gave an opportunity for the students who were here to ask questions of the, of the panel, and then again, broke the group up into smaller, or broke the large group up into smaller groups and gave them pretty comprehensive tours of the high school. Again, got a lot of positive feedback on that. And then the conclusion of our Columbia promotion, for at least that limited period of time, was, um, that, uh, Porus Porter School hosted an event for schools of choice to come and set up a, a table and, and provide information to families. And so, um, Penny, uh, went to that with Mary Rose Mead, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, and Dan Trudora, Athletic Director, and, um, and, uh, provided, uh, you know, were there to answer any questions that, that parents and students might have. One of the things that they also did was they distributed, um, this booklet, which hopefully people have in front of them. It's, uh, it, it is just an overview of classes and programs and unique opportunities and athletics and clubs and all, again, all that we have to offer. Um, it's something that I, I really think it's important that I recognize and thank. Shelley Ozwicki, who is a, uh, art teacher here at Ram High School, who just has done an amazing job of, of, of assisting us and, um, creating all of this, you know, the PowerPoint slideshow that was used, uh, for the parent presentation. Um, the booklet that, um, that you have in front of you. Um, she did a great job with it. Uh, and, and, and the last thing I, I need to make sure I recognize and thank is, is Penny and her team. They've taken a lot of, of extra stuff on with regards to this. And, and, you know, I just appreciate all the work and effort that they've done to, to, to promote the district as a school of choice and promote this new partnership. I also want to recognize and congratulate several Ram High School artists who have been recognized for their work in the Connecticut Regional Scholastic Arts Program. Student artwork is judged by professional artists and university art faculty and is selected on merit for inclusion in statewide art exhibition held at the Hartford Art School. Beyond the honor of being selected, uh, for this high-quality exhibit, students may be awarded gold or silver keys and honorable mention awards in each of the eighteen media categories. Uh, and the following high school students were recognized for their work. Allison Petradis, honorable mention in printmaking. Uh, Tallulah Stomberg, honorable mention in ceramics and glass and a gold key in mixed media. Lindsay Raymond, honorable mention in sculpture. Ryan Pagnini, um, gold key in photography. And Maya Strumskis, honorable mention in photography. It's, uh, again, a great example of, of the good stuff that's going on here. Uh, and that concludes my superintendent's report.
So that will bring us to the student program spotlight.
So, no offense to everybody here. My favorite part of the meeting is having our students, students talk. There's some acknowledgement of that being the best part. I, I'm super excited to, uh, introduce and welcome Kathy Green, who is a science teacher here at Ram High School, and some of her students from the Medical Careers Program that we have. Kathy, uh, runs a great program. I have, uh, I have been vic, vic, uh, I shouldn't say victim. She has taken my blood, literally and physically, uh, on many occasions. Um, I told her that, I don't know if you guys donate blood, you get those phone calls from the Red Cross pretty incessantly if you don't schedule. I tell her I have to ignore the phone calls that I get from the Red Cross, cause I, if I donate my blood to anybody but Ram, then Kathy gets mad at me, so. Kathy, thanks for being here. I appreciate it, and students as well. Appreciate you guys being here to talk about your program. Please do. Yes, everybody.
So I'm Kathy Green. I teach here at Ram. I am affectionately or non-affectionately known as the vampire, because we run, um, several blood drives a year. I wanted to tell you about some of the opportunities here at Ram. I'm very fortunate to teach several of our dual enrollment classes. So with Southern Connecticut State University, I teach Introduction to Exercise Science. With Eastern Connecticut State University, I teach Human Anatomy and Physiology. And today I want to tell you about UConn's class, Introduction to Medical Careers. The students, who I am incredibly proud of, will receive one credit for Introduction to Medical Careers and two credits for, um, medical terminology. So the, they're gonna talk about Introduction to Medical Careers today, cause that's where people get to see them and what they're doing. And that's a course to get students aware of all the different medical careers that are out there so that they can make informed choices of what they want to do with their future and what they want to major in in college. Yeah, I went through about five slides. So, if you wanna go through a couple of those. So the course description and goals. Here are my students. They'll introduce themselves as they come in. Um, if you can go through our speakers, I should go over here so people can hear me. The, a bunch of our speakers are prior graduates of Ram. So these students, and I'm hoping these students will come back. They come back to help the, um, current Ram students, tell them about their careers, and tell them how they got from where these students are right now to where they can be in their careers. And if you want to bring that forward, another one. And let's talk about some career exploration. Who's the first one? Go ahead.
So I'm Kimmy Bailey, and obviously, as Ms. Green stated, I'm a medical careers student. And so one of the first speakers that came in and talked to our class was Jennifer Johnson, and I know when you think of medical careers, you think of like physical, like medicine, like trying to treat, like ailments, but and when you think of pastoral counseling, you think maybe church or religion, but, uh, Mrs. Johnson was actually, it's more similar to like a death doula and like helping people come to terms with like the, their terminal illness and like just getting, and helping like the families with like the process of death. And so it was very interesting, because not only, she doesn't like actually like provide like medication, like help people with like hospice, but they ju, she helps them more like mentally and spiritually, and tries to help the family come to terms and like the patient come to terms. So it was like really nice, like exploring not just like, like when you think of medical careers, it's not just a doctor, but like, there's like different types of medicine, and so we got to explore that with the speaker specifically. And then another speaker that came in was a school psychologist, and so, and again, in turn, it was less about like physical medicine and more about like mental health, and like, it was, it was nice, because it was actually a psychologist that's still in our school, and like, we can go see personally, so like her coming to our class and like talking about mental health and like all that her job like entails it. It broadened the spectrum of like the different medical careers that we could personally, um, try ourselves. And so it was really nice just to see a familiar face and also focus in more on mental health than physical medicine.
Hello, my name's Annalise Timinski, and I'm just gonna talk about Jeff real quick. Um, I met him actually last year when he came to exercise physiology class. And he brought a bunch of equipment. It was, or no, he came to medical careers. I went there as an exercise physiology student. Um, and he had so much equipment. It was so fun, interactive. And then in medical careers, he came, brought that equipment, same thing. Um, and he talked about his educational background, so he taught us like what class he took in high school and then college. And then also his business that he runs now. He's an entrepreneur in Glastonbury, I believe, and he runs his own physical therapy facility training mainly athletes with golf and baseball. Um, so yeah, it was really interesting, cause physical therapy is definitely a big thing. We need physical therapists, so, yeah, that was Jeff.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth. Um, the other medical speaker we got to listen to was Stephanie Fontano. Um, it was really interesting to see. She was, um, mainly like entrepreneur. Um, but she highlighted a lot of the preventative, uh, care she did with exercise, um, exercise prescription. Exercise prescription and kind of the same how Jeff was, but she highlighted a lot of the entrepreneurship aspect of the medical career, which was really interesting. And then we also got to, um, hear from a travel nurse, Caleb. He was a graduate from Ram, I believe, and it was very interactive. Um, we got to incubate a pig lung, which is like inserting a tube through a pig's, uh, throat, which was very interesting, but also really cool. We do a lot of, I took Ms. Green's anatomy and physiology class, so it was like more practice with, um, labs. But he was a very, um, relatable and real speaker. He really showed a lot of the, um, hard things that come with being a travel nurse and how he got to be like an emergency nurse, which is something different than we used to see from the speakers, cause they're usually very light and they're, they just go through their education, but he was very direct with his story to become a travel nurse.
Um, I'm Paul Thomas. I'm a senior at a Ram High School, obviously. I'm in the Med Careers class. And so Timothy Greigus was a surgical tech, technologist that came in with us. He had brought in like an extensive amount of tools, and he, and put a lot of emphasis on sterilization and making sure everything stays clean, cause in like the medical environment, once you touch something, it's not sterile anymore. So he came in, he explained what like surgical technologists do. He loves his job. He loves cutting into things, he says, and um, we learned a lot from him. He brought, he showed us how each tool, what each tool was and like what it did. Um, he explained his job, his career, like his educational background and pathways. And he gave us like an insight on what it would be like being in the surgical, like wing of the hospital or any medical facility you might be at. But yeah, sterilization is key. And then, yeah, so clinical skills. Um, in our Med Careers class, we learned a lot of clinical skills, um, including CPR and QPR certifications and trainings. So the first thing we did was we went to the Hebron Fire Department, um, which is local to us. And we, um, had spent like two, two, three hours. First, we went, went over like present, we went over like a big presentation, and then we watched videos, and we learned all about, um, CPR on children and adults. And there's different like, uh, methods and different like procedures for like children and adults, cause obviously we're, we're different and we're like bigger and smaller. Um, we learned, we got like free, where they gave us free, um, rescue mats or like breathing rescue mats. And we also did, uh, CP, we, they showed us, and we did CPR like in the image right here. They showed us how to do CPR on the, uh, the, the dolls they have. And, um, after we took a test, it was like a thirty-question test, and if you passed it, we got our CPR certification, so that's really cool. It's really nice that our Med Careers class offers that, and I'm really grateful that I got my CPR certification. And then for QPR, um, we had a, AHM Youth come in, and they talked about like suicide prevention and the importance on it, and how to like listen to people and advocate for them. And, you know, if someone's having like a rough time, it's good to like listen to them. You don't want to be like, you want to be considerate to their, like, if there's something going on, you need to like report it. And that's why, after we listened to HMU services, we got, um, a QPR certification, which is also really cool for us, but. Yep.
Um, so blood drives are a big part of the medical careers class. Um, we host three drives per year. We have over two hundred pints of blood collected annually. Um, and then also over ten Red Cross scholarships awarded annually, so this part of the medical careers class really offers a lot and a lot of experience with teachers and students and, um, helping them in their process to give blood, which is very impactful. Believe it's like.
And is that our superintendent?
Yeah, so, um, our medical career students helped with, um, assisting the teachers and students to walk to the tables that they were laid down on when, and then the, um, the Red Cross people came and took their blood, and, and, um, they were also there to help them, just talk with them and, and kind of share their experiences, um, and help them if they're feeling a little uneasy about giving a pint of blood. It can be a lot, especially if it's their first time. Personally, I was helping a, a girl. We kind of had the same experience the first time I donated blood. I did not have a good experience, but I was able to help her with that, um, and get her home safely. But, um, they also were able to help them when they were supposed to bring the students and teachers safely to the mats on the floor after they got blood and food and drink, um, and just have them, uh, help them have a good time and also educate them on the impact they have, because donating your blood is really important. And it's also depending on the type of blood you have. You can have an even bigger impact. I have AB negative blood, which is like the rarest type of blood. Um, so I did donate blood, which was really good. Um, rare, rare bloods, um, are als, obviously crucial to donate, because there's less prevalence of them, but like, types of blood, there's A, B, O, and then there's negatives and positives, so. Hmm, you could also get the app, the Red Cross app, and learn where it goes and who you impacted, and it's really, um, it's a really good experience. We were able to talk with different people and just be there the whole day and kind of see how the whole blood drive works. We'll be doing another one in the spring. Hopefully, there's gonna be a lot more. March thirteenth. Um, we'll have more of the athletes that couldn't come, but. You guys want to say anything?
I think you can go.
Yeah, go to the next one. Community service. Okay, so here you see a few of us from our Med Careers class up there. Um, that was such a great experience. It was just an optional community service day, so Hartford Healthcare, they've been doing this community outreach program. I believe this was the second year they've been doing this, so it was at Wyndham Senior Center? Senior Center, so Senior Community Center. Um, great place. It's beautiful. They did such a good job there. And then so Hartford Healthcare comes in, like doctors, nurses, nutritionists, anything you can think of. And anyone in the community can come in. It's absolutely free. You don't need to show any sign of insurance. Don't need to show anything. Totally free. Um, so anyone can come off the streets, and they can get hot meals. They can get coats, boots. It was like right before winter during November. November second. So yeah, right before the winter, you know, I gotta start bundling up, get some new boots. Um, and you could also get vaccines, so like your flu shot. And then talking to nutritionists about what types of foods like might be better for you and your situation and where to get them. Um, there was just, it was a great experience, and this is us here just making some sandwiches for the, um, food bank that they were gonna deliver to, and then, yeah, it was just great to help people out. It felt really great. Yeah, so, yeah.
Excellent. That's what we've got for you, if you'd like to donate blood, March thirteenth. And your future is safe in their hands.
Do you guys know what you want to do? When you graduate?
Should we just say like, oh, we're going to?
Yeah, um, I'm hoping to go into public health and epidemiology.
Do you know which college you're going to, Kathy?
Most likely Simmons in Boston. Most likely, but we don't know yet. It's undecided.
Good luck.
Um, I'm still a junior, so I'm still not quite sure. I just, I took this class, cause I was like, oh, it'll introduce me to some fields. I'm thinking maybe like to start off at like a medical assistant, just like to join a short program and just get my toes dipped in the water and like, but then figure it out from there.
Yeah, so I'm a senior, and I want to pursue like a nursing career. I applied a little bit later in the year than everyone else, so I still have to like get back to my colleges, but I'm trying to go to Eastern, where I, I put, like, I applied to their nursing program. Like their nursing program, and I hope they get back to me, but I want to pursue. But I want to pursue nursing career and MedCareers helps with that. And it was anatomy class. I should have taken it. I missed out. I didn't even know about it, but I missed out on that. It was a good class, but yeah.
I'm committed to Central Connecticut State University for nursing. So I'll get my bachelor's and I'm interested in cardiac rehab right now.
Anybody else have questions?
It's amazing.
I'm just curious, did, was it, you're interested in a medical career? So you took a class or did you take a class and then potentially becoming interested in a medical career?
For me, I've always just like, oh, sorry. I've always wanted to be in the healthcare field since like kindergarten. I thought I wanted to be a pediatrician for the longest time and then moved on from that, realized how much school that was. But yeah, I came into middle school so excited. Like I knew there was anatomy and exercise physiology and med career. So I was so pumped to go into high school and take all those classes and I'm so glad I did. And met Ms. Green. She's amazing, but yeah. Yeah, so my junior year, I took Ms. Green's anatomy and physiology class and also her genetics class. And that really helped me just like direct where I wanted to go. I'm a very indecisive person, so that learning all of the parts of the body and the anatomy and physiology of it helped me narrow down kind of what I wanted. But medical career is definitely really just kickstarted the whole researching the specific career. And yeah, it's really helpful. It's a really good experience. Also, even though I'm not going into a lot of the emergency medical things, it's, it was really helpful to just appreciate how many people just go through so many intense jobs just to save lives and just help people's health. And I think that's really cool.
Well, I was always like in and out of the hospital like when I was younger. And I was like, wow, these people are actually like, they're helping me. And like, I just, I wanted to help kids like me too. Because like it was always so stressful going in and like all these people in scrubs and masks. And I'm like, oh, like let me take your blood pressure. I'm like, what is this going to do? So I always, I just being surrounded by it so much as a kid, I was always like, I want to do that too. And then when I heard about Ms. Green's class, I was like, oh, I know what I'm going to take. So it's just helped me narrow down and like figure out like expenses. Because not trying to be stuck in school forever, but I want to like get a personal experience like with patient care and stuff. So yeah.
Kind of similar to what like Kimmy said, I was a patient too. So I have like, I was influenced by being a patient and like seeing like, like the workforce and seeing what they do. And I was really like impressed by like how efficient they can operate things. And I took the MedCareers class. I kind of had an interest in being a nurse to begin with, but I still wanted to see everything else to see if I like could change my mind or just see like what is like in all the different departments of like a hospital or medical facility. And what I liked about our MedCareers class is we learned how to treat the patients properly. We learned about like patient, patient advocacy and like cultural like competence or like, you know, being fair to everyone, equal, equality and like, just like equal everything, you know? And anyway, I really loved the class. I'm grateful for it. And that's why I, I think it's a great class for everyone to take. Thank you.
I want to ask something. I'm sorry, my voice is barely there. First of all, I want to say thank you. You guys were great. You did a great presentation. You guys were comfortable up there talking about it. It was good to see. But I ran blood drives in college for a couple of years. And the thing I remember best, and I'm just wondering if it's still there, had a deli bell. It rang the deli bell if somebody was fainting or looked like they're going to faint. And we rushed the gurney over to them to, to this day. Now, college is a long time ago for me, guys. To this day, I hear a deli bell and I, I jump. Do I need to run? Do you have anything like that for you guys?
They, so the answer is yes, but the adult volunteer usually hasn't because otherwise it gets run a lot.
Fun to see me come running with a stretcher.
What we're known for is all the food at our blood drive.
Thank you very much, you guys. This was great. You did a great job. All right, raises to the consent agenda. So approval of minutes and how do you want to do that? In here?
Yep.
Did you want to talk about it at all or no?
Yeah, well, I mean, I could, I could, yeah, I can mention. So for our consent agenda tonight, we have a number of different things. We have the minutes from the December 16 meeting, which need to be approved. There's also, as the board knows, we have moved to having our approval of the different policies as a part of the consent agenda. So there are a few policies with regards to adoption, a few with regards to revision, and then a few with regards to, actually no, I apologize. There's one for adoption, a brand new one, and the remaining ones are for deletion. In between our December meeting and tonight, I received no questions, comments, or concern to me. So I would recommend that the board approve the changes in policy that are being recommended via the consent agenda. Thanks.
So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Scott Soyet.
Scott Soyet?
Second.
Second with Gabe Marks. Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay. Old business. No old business. So new business. We have the discussion and possible action of the 2025-2028 contract between the Ram Education Association and the Region 8 Board of Education. It's enclosure 11.1.
So thank, I'll, I'll just echo some of the things that Ms. Kane said and I appreciate you talking about the, the positive spirit and the collaborative tone of negotiations. That absolutely was the case. I was happy to work with Amy, with Kirsten Erlenson and with Mike Boyer as members of the board's negotiations team. As you indicated, an 11.1, enclosure 11.1 of the contract gives a high-level overview of some of the financials with regards to changes in the contract. For next year, it will be a 3.25% increase at max step and 1.5 below max. In year two of the contract, it would be a 3.25% increase again at max step and a 1.5 below max. And in the final year of the contract, it's a 3.25% increase at max step and 1.6 below max. First year of the contract, that cost would be $550,000 approximately. And the second year of the contract, it would be approximately an increase of $635,000. And in the third year of the contract, it would be approximately $660,000. I think it's really important to note that this board has been extremely supportive of making great strides over the past year with regards to our contract negotiations. We, and, and really trying to better align the salaries and benefits for our employees, not just certified teachers, but obviously our non-certified employees as well. And we've made, again, great efforts and, and positive movement with our custodial and secretarial group as well as our paraeducators and our nurses. And I'm thrilled that we're, we're in a good place with, with the teachers as well. So I appreciate everybody's effort and I appreciate the REA's recognition of that effort as well. For insurance premium changes, our current premium cost share is 20, their current premium cost share is 21, 21 and a half percent. In the first year of the contract, it would remain at 21 and a half percent. So there would be no realized savings in that first year because we're not looking at plan design changes either. In the second year of the contract, there is an increase of a half a percent to 22% for a premium cost share and an anticipated savings of approximately $13,000. And then the third and final year of the contract, an additional half of a percent, moving it up to 22.5 with an approximate savings of $26,000. Again, the board has shared my goal of increasing the salaries and benefits of Ram teachers and staff to be more competitive. And, and again, I believe that this does work in that direction to get us closer to being where we want to be. The contract was ratified by the REA and I recommend that the board do the same at tonight's meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the 2025 to 2028 contract between the Region 8 Board of Education and the Ram Education Association.
I'll make the motion.
Joe Cluddy?
I'll second.
Scott Soyet was the second. Have any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay. Great. That will bring us to the presentation of the 2025-2026 Region 8 proposed administrative budget.
So we're going to give Erin and Michael an opportunity to just transition over the slide deck and Eva is going to help. So in the budget book is, if you open up the front cover, there is the slide deck that I'm going to go through. If you wanted to look at it as we go along or take notes.
Whoever's idea it was to intersperse artwork in these, it was just genius.
See, this is why I don't give PowerPoint slideshows when I teach classes because everybody starts looking ahead. Board members that are attending remotely, I'll be able to provide the slide deck to you either later tonight or tomorrow. Thank you, Dr. Shrucci. I am pleased to present the proposed administrative budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year to both the board and the entire Region 8 community. There we go. The proposed budget will support the district's mission and vision of partnering with families and the community to provide our students with a high-quality education in a welcoming, safe and equitable environment. It is critical that we keep these factors in mind as we move through the budget process over the next several months. The proposed budget also supports the work of all district staff focused on ensuring Ram graduates have the skills and dispositions that are necessary to be successful in life beyond high school. These skills and dispositions include critical thinking, motivation, communication, integrity and collaboration. This budget was built with several priorities in mind. First, the budget supports the implementation of the goals identified in the district's strategic plan. These goals focus on improving in the areas of instruction, talent management, climate and culture, and organizational systems. The budget also supports the academic and social emotional needs of students. It enables us to maintain a program of studies with a variety of course offerings and career pathways that ensure Ram students are college and career-ready upon graduation. Finally, it enables us to improve and maintain the district's facilities and grounds. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2526 is $33,180,313 and represents an overall budget increase of 4.36%. This amount is a combination of a net operating budget of $32,332,036 and a capital budget of $848,227. There are several drivers increasing the proposed budget over the current years. Significant budget drivers include health insurance, contractual salary increases, special education purchase services, technology, hardware and software, transportation, utilities, instructional supplies and furniture. The proposed operating budget also includes some significant reductions. The notable reductions include special education outplacements, special education transportation and fuel costs. Another significant budget driver is our newly established partnership with the Columbia Board of Education, which makes Ram High School a school of choice for incoming freshmen from Columbia beginning next school year. For each Columbia student attending Ram, Columbia's public schools will pay a base tuition of $15,124 plus any additional costs associated with specialized instruction or services provided to students with identified needs. Columbia will also be responsible for transportation costs. The tuition that is paid by Columbia is factored into the Region 8 budget as revenue and reduces the member town levy paid towards our budget by Andover, Hebron and Marlboro. While the number of Columbia students who will choose to attend Ram High School next year is not yet known, the proposed budget reflects an amount equal to the base tuition price of 10 Columbia students attending Ram High School. This number will be adjusted as Columbia eighth grade students and their families make their high school choice in the beginning of March. I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the budgetary impact of our annual debt payment paid towards the principal and interest of the school construction and renovation projects from over 20 years ago. During last year's budget season, we realized a $655,900 reduction in the debt bond payment from the previous year. This was a significant reduction on our budget from previous fiscal years. For next year and the year after, we will see nominal changes in the debt bond payment until it is paid off at the conclusion of the 2026, 2020 fiscal, 27 fiscal year. It is important to note that we are faced with numerous high-cost projects in the very near future that will require bonding. These projects include a new roof for both schools, replacing the boilers, chillers and HVAC controls, replacing the fire and security systems, replacing the loading dock area and the tennis courts and the adjacent fencing. The total cost for these projects will be over $10.5 million. But it is critical that these projects are done in a timely manner in order to maintain the safety and integrity of our buildings and grounds. This chart shows the percentage distribution of the proposed budget by each object category in relation to the total budget. As you can see, 73% of the proposed operating budget is allocated towards employee salaries and benefits. These are fixed costs associated with staffing our schools. The funds proposed for next year's capital budget represent a small percent of the actual needs. The development of the capital budget was a collaborative effort between district administration and members of the facilities and finance subcommittees. The proposed capital budget is $848,277, which is $348,500 higher than the current year's capital budget. The proposed capital budget will enable the district to continue to address issues related to the maintenance of buildings, the exterior and replacing age, replace aging furniture, fixtures and equipment. The capital budget also includes the replacement of the track, which is over 20 years old and has already been resurfaced once. Due to the poor condition of the track, it will not be used for competitions for the spring 2025 season, this current spring season. And in all competitions for this year's high school and middle school track programs must be held at opposing teams venues. The proposed track replacement project includes replacing the foundation of the track, the installation of D zones for field events, the replacement of fencing and the relocation of the scoreboard. the installation of D zones for field events, the replacement of fencing, and the relocation of the scoreboard. While the projected cost of the track of $1,584,330 is significant, the Region 8 Board's strategic establishment and use of a capital nonrecurring account using surplus funds will lessen the financial impact of the track project on our three towns. There is currently a balance of $433,244 in unallocated capital funds available. Additionally, we are projecting the availability of 2% of last year's Region 8 budget, or $625,599, to be available to place into our capital nonrecurring account and be used to further offset the cost of the track project. The total available in current funding sources will pay for the majority of the track project, but requires an additional $525,487 to complete the project. Should this project not be funded, we anticipate not being able to allow our student athletes or members of the community who frequently use the track to have access to it next school year. This table provides a history of budget increases for Region 8. As you can see, the district has a demonstrated history of fiscal responsibility. School districts across the state and country are contending with rising costs and challenging economic times, and I am pleased that the proposed budget is a reasonable increase considering these factors. This table provides the per pupil expenditure for secondary regional school districts. Region 8's PPE increased from last year. However, we continue to provide a high-quality educational experience for our students at a cost that is amongst the lowest in the state for a secondary regional district. This graph shows the district's October 1 enrollment since 2015, as well as the projected enrollment through the 2034-2035 school year. For the October 2024 report to the state, district enrollment was 1,078 students. As you can see, current projections indicate that enrollment will decrease slightly next year before leveling off and then increase into numbers exceeding our current enrollment by 2035. The October 1, 2024 enrollment at Ram Middle School was 354 students. Enrollment at the middle school is projected to remain steady for the next few years before increasing in the 28-29 school year. The October 1, 2024 enrollment at Ram High School was 724 students. High school enrollment is projected to experience a slight decrease in enrollment through the 27-28 school year before gradually increasing and eventually surpassing current enrollment in 2031-32. It's important to note that these projections do not factor in Columbia students who will choose to attend Ram. Over the next 10 years, the elementary districts feeding into Ram are projected to increase their combined enrollment by approximately 200 students. This graph shows the projected combined elementary enrollment of Andover, Hebron, and Marlboro through the 2034-2035 fiscal year. The projected enrollment growth at the elementary school districts that feed into Ram indicate Ram enrollment will continue to grow beyond our current 10-year projections. This data, coupled with our new partnership with Columbia Schools, which will bring additional enrollment, demonstrate the need to maintain staffing levels which can continue to meet the needs of our students and offer a wide variety of course offerings. The proposed budget includes the addition of three safety security offers to work collaboratively in both schools. These positions will improve the security posture of the district, collaborating with our school resource officer, administration, and hallway monitors, and help the front office staff manage visitors accessing the buildings. The budget also includes the addition of an athletic trainer. As the board knows, we have been using independent contractors to meet our athletic training needs for the current school year after the company that we had been contracted with to provide athletic training services was unable to fulfill their commitment to Ram. It is in the best interest of student athletes and coaches to have a full-time, dedicated staff employee to serve in this capacity to ensure consistency and continuity of care. The resignation of a teacher late last spring led to the elimination of the Latin program offered to middle school and high school students. Since this resignation was given after the adoption of the current year's budget, the elimination of this position is reflected in the budget for the upcoming school year. Additionally, the budget reflects a reduction of two special education paraprofessionals. The district has been unable to fill a few par educator vacancies over the past several years. The administration reviewed current student needs and determined that it could eliminate two par educator vacancies that currently exist. It is important to note that the needs of students can shift, and the administration may need to hire additional unbudgeted staff to adequately meet student needs. There are a few factors which could impact the proposed budget and lead to possible changes over the next few months. We are awaiting the formal report of the auditors, which will be presented to presented to the board at its February meeting. However, as I noted earlier, we anticipate utilizing 2% of the surplus funds from last year's budget for the track project. Any additional funds beyond the 2% will not reduce our budget percentage increase. Those funds will be applied to the member town levy paid by each of the three towns which make up Region 8 and reduce their required contribution to next year's budget. Health insurance benefits are also negotiated through the bargaining process. However, insurance premium cost rates are adjusted each year based on trends and claims. These adjustments are determined by the Region 8 Medical and Health Insurance Consortium. Based on current trends and claims, the consortium's established increase is currently 8% for next school year, for next fiscal year. This final amount has been determined historically in March, and any changes will be applied to the budget. The district is also responsible for tuition for students who choose to attend magnet and agri-science schools. Last year, you may recall the changes in the law related to magnet school and agri-science schools tuition capped tuition costs paid by districts at 58%. And the remaining balance was to be paid by the state. While the state did provide funding to pay the remaining 42% for this current year, we have not received any assurances that this funding will be available next year. And as a result, we are again budgeting for the full tuition cost for magnet and agri-science schools. If we receive any assurances that the funding will be made available, we will adjust the budget accordingly. And finally, as previously mentioned, once the number of Columbia students choosing to attend Ram High School for next year is known in early March, our projected revenue will also be adjusted accordingly. It is important to highlight the return on the community's investment into our district as Ram Middle and High School provides tremendous opportunities for our students. At the middle school, our students perform at levels that are well above state averages and standardized assessments and have opportunities for a more personalized learning experience with the inquiry team. At the high school, our students can choose over 250 course offerings and 25 career pathways. The program of studies currently offers 33 dual credit opportunities for students to earn college credits, as well as career and technical education courses, which provide desirable skills and prepare graduates to immediately enter the workforce into high-paying careers should they choose to do so. Students continually achieve at high levels and find success in advanced placement classes and score well above state and national average SAT scores. Ram High School annually ranks as one of the top high schools in the state by U.S. News and World Reports based on a variety of metrics. Ram also provides a high-quality educational experience for students beyond academic achievement and has been recognized as a best community for music education for eight consecutive years. Our fine and performing arts programs and classes enable students to achieve at high levels and be recognized statewide and nationally for their talents and hard work. Ram students are also provided with opportunities to demonstrate their skills and excel as student athletes. Last year, Ram had three state championship teams, two state runners-up, and six CCC division champions. Individually, numerous student athletes earned acclaim as all-state, all-conference, and triple-threat athletes, students who participate in three sports seasons. The proposed administrative budget reflects the efforts of district and school administration, department coordinators, and other staff to put forward a responsible budget that maintains the high-quality educational programming and facilities that the Ram community has come to expect. It is the result of several months of collaboration between school and district administrators, department coordinators, and staff, and is intended to provide the Board of Education and the general public with a clear understanding of the district's programs and priorities. The administration and staff of Regional School District 8 are grateful for the support of the board and the communities of Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro provide to Ram to help ensure our students are receiving a high-quality education which makes them prepared to make meaningful contributions to society. The board is scheduled to meet on April 7 to adopt the 25-26 budget, and I look forward to working collaboratively with board members until this time to review the proposed budget and provide more information. We have meetings scheduled for the board to hear more detailed information about budget requests from specific departments on Wednesday, this Wednesday, January 29, and February 23, and if necessary, an additional date as well. These meetings will provide a greater level of detail about specific budget requests and provide the board with an opportunity to get clarifying information. That concludes my presentation.
Anybody have any questions?
When the HVAC, I'm just looking back because we were talking about future projects of the HVAC controls, so is there a is there something out by the state regarding testing of HVAC systems?
We had a, I don't think it was, it was an air quality assessment that needed to be done.
Okay.
And that was conducted.
That was conducted.
Correct. So the capital project that I was referring to is a a project in totality for our HVAC system. As I mentioned, it's our boilers, our chillers, and the controls. Those three things alone are significant, high-value, high-priced items. That, from my understanding of it, that the anticipated shelf life for those types of things when they are installed into a school is right about 20 years. And we are right at about 20 years right now. And so we know that we are going to be going into what I would consider to be borrowed time, so we need to be proactive in looking at replacing some of those bigger ticket items like boilers, chillers, and extraptions.
So none of these came out of that, the air quality?
No, no, no. This is, this is simply a matter of addressing, proactively addressing things. So it's, it's, I see it a lot in news reports when you talk about schools that need significant construction projects, renovation projects. I think that there are unfortunately times where through maybe sometimes things that are beyond the control of a Board of Education or a local municipality is they let things go, right? You don't take care of the things that need to be taken care of. And what often happens when that happens is things break down, things deteriorate, and you get yourself into the situation where if we don't address the boilers, the chillers, and the HVAC controls in a timely fashion, then that's going to just be added, that's going to be at the top of the list of things that need to be done, but that list is just going to continue to grow. And so the approach that we are taking is when we pay down our bond for the construction and renovation, it's going to be really important for this board to know we're going to have to go right out again and bond out to address some of these significant costly building-associated projects that relate to the capital plan, so.
I just didn't note that.
If I can add to, I can understand where you're trying to get to. So yes, we did get some reimbursement funds from the state for the indoor air quality projects. However, that was about three shy of $400,000. So we actually have a plan of action based on the recommendations from that study that we have to, that we're addressing, yes.
Okay, and that's what I was wondering, if any of that came from recommendations?
Now, this is above that.
And what Eva was talking about, the approximately $400,000, that wasn't an outcome of the air quality survey. That was actually us proactively seeking state grant funding that had been made available. We were fortunate that we had done stuff, we had the documentation, we were able to apply for that, for those grants and be reimbursed for those projects that we had already paid for.
And just one other quick question. How many special ed outplacements do we have? I see the number 600.
That information is in your budget book. We're looking at a total, I believe, of 17 special education outplacements out of district projections.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, page 26 of your budget book.
Before the green mark.
I absolutely understand that there's going to be questions that board members might have. The thing that I would say is the budget book is something that we spend a significant amount of time putting together. I would encourage everybody to go through the budget book in its entirety. The first 50-some-odd pages are a combination of charts and tables that give you a lot of financial information. Accompanying those charts and tables are also narratives that provide a context for the, for the changes and the financial aspect of things. And I think the best thing for you all to do is spend some time, go through the budget book, read it, mark it up, ask questions, you know, write, write your questions down in the notes. And as I always ask is, is that if you know that you're going to have, if questions come to mind, I would ask for you to email me those questions because that way, when we come together at the next board meeting, it gives Eva and I an opportunity to sit down, review questions that you might have, and then make sure that we're prepared to answer those questions. It's a lot to digest.
And then at the workshops, there's more opportunity to hear in more detail from the department heads.
Anybody else online, Mike or Kirsten? Any questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you. Looking forward to the workshops.
Okay, so that will bring us to the enclosure 11.3, which is the gift acknowledgement.
Yes, so your agenda in your packet is, as Heather just said, enclosure 11.3, which it's simply a memo that is providing notification to you all as a board that some gifts were received by the district. And I've accepted those gifts in accordance with the administration regulations establishing within our board policy around donations. I always like to make sure that we make note of individuals or organizations that make donations to the district. So one of the donations was made by Mr. and Mrs. Thomas Brophy, a donation of $2,500 to the Ram High School Boys Basketball Team. It's a great sentiment. As the board, as board members may know, there was a gentleman who coached and a member of our community passed away, and the money is going to be used to have customized workout outfits. Really paying respect and tribute to co-chairs who passed away. The second one is a donation of $1,256.30 to Ram High School. As a part of the contract that Art Rich Photography has with the district, they donate 25% of underclassmen's sales of the yearbook back to the school, and that's the dollar amount that they're going to donate. So again, there's no action that needs to be taken on the part of the board. It's just always something that we like to acknowledge and appreciate and say thank you for those donations and gifts.
All right, so then 11.4 is first read of policies.
So I'll just, I'll go through these. I know that I have a few members of the policy subcommittee that are, that are here with us obviously as well and can, can speak to these. The first one is policy 1510, which is the school visitors' policy. which is the school visitors policy. Board members may recall that this is one that came to you in a previous iteration. There was some concern that was expressed about the language not being clear enough. So it went back to this policy subcommittee, and I'm really happy to bring it forward to you because there is consensus with the policy subcommittee that we are at a place where things are good. And, and again, this is just a first reading, but we could certainly take any questions if, if Board members have them. I'll just move on.
Just one comment.
Yep.
Ooh.
Yeah, there you go. Exactly. The, the next one is a new policy 4117, which is exit surveys or interviews. This is a, something that came up that the Board was interested in developing a policy outlining the, outlining the procedures that the district would utilize in, in accordance with Connecticut general statutes regarding exit surveys and interviews. Again, this went to the Board, I'm sorry, the Board Subcommittee on Policy. There was a lot of really healthy conversation about it, and, and the group has landed at coming to consensus with the language as it is currently presented. I'll just keep moving on. Policy 69, I'm sorry, 6190, which is, the current policy is called weighted grading for honors classes. The revised version that we're going to look to have the Board adopt is weighted grading calculation of grade point average, averages, and class rank. I explained this to the policy subcommittee. This was actually, this, this policy almost fell into that bucket of it didn't need to come to the full Board because it was really about comprehensive changes in, in the law. And so, as, as Board members recall, there was a change in the policy that if a policy is being updated in accordance with legislative changes based off of recommendations by our attorney, then it's just something that we could put into place and I informed the Board about. This is a little different because of two things. Number one, we're adding in the class rank component, which you'll see later on is going to allow us to delete a current standalone policy on class rank. And then the only other thing, the only other way that this, that this policy differs is that our current policy related to weighted grading specifies that it is for honors classes such as AP classes, honor classes, et cetera, so that there's a weight to those grades. The one piece of, that was missing in our current policy is having additional weight assigned to early college credits. Or so, so dual enrollment classes, whether it's ECE, dual enrollment, whatever you want to call it. We feel that those classes are certainly at a higher level than, than a standard high school class, and, and, and additional weight should be assigned to those as well. So that is, that policy change. As I indicated, policy 6150, which is the next one in your packet, is class rank. We are recommending this for deletion because language now is included in the policy that I just reviewed with you. The next one is policy 1430, which is restricting recreational use of school grounds by motorized recreational vehicles. I want to be very clear. I am not promoting recreational vehicles to be driven on school grounds. They are still not allowed to be driven on school grounds. We are allowed to prohibit that even absent this policy. And so, you know, one of the exercises that we've been going through, as everybody knows, is to get rid of policies that are unnecessary. This is, this falls into that category. If we see anybody, adult, student, whoever, driving an ATV or a snowmobile on school grounds, we're going to tell them they can't do that, still do that even absent a policy. Policy 22, I'm sorry, 2330, review of administrative decisions, which basically says the superintendent shall have the power to act in manners, if matters not covered by the Board of Education policy. Any decision of the superintendent of schools may be subject to review by the Board at a regular or special meeting. Again, the elimination of this policy or the deletion of this policy does not take away your ability to question decisions that are made by school and district administrators. You have that right as members of the Board of Education. It's just an unnecessary policy, and we're recommending deletion. The next one is school calendar, 6111. It basically just talks about when we set the calendar. It is an unnecessary policy. We, we, we don't need to have it in a policy. You all may recall that I added that tab to the district webpage under the Board of Education, which says something to the extent of, you know, ongoing or standing Board of Education agenda topics. It's not a list in totality of what those agenda items are, but setting the calendar, the audit report, those are things that fall in there, which is why we can get rid of some of those policies that talk about school calendars and audit reports. The next one is 6164, acquired immune deficiency syndrome. It simply talks about the fact that instruction needs to be provided on that particular topic and that basically families have the ability to exempt students from that particular topic when it is being provided, when instruction is being provided upon it. We actually have a separate policy, curricular exemptions. That was, I think we updated that last spring. And within the context of the curricular exemptions policy, it, it makes mention that the, one of the curricular exemptions is instruction on acquired immune deficiency syndrome. So this is a redundant policy because it's captured, basically the spirit of it is captured somewhere else. The last policy that we are recommending deletion of is 6210, which is resident students not attending in the public schools. In essence, this policy says if you have a student who's going to a magnet school, but they reside in the towns of Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro, the superintendent of schools could allow that student not attending Ram to participate in extracurricular activities, be it clubs, be it a, a, a sport. This is a practice that I don't endorse. This is a practice that I don't feel is appropriate. We, we don't allow students who are not registered at Ram or not currently students at Ram to participate in those activities. It, the reason that you do that is because you essentially, that we don't allow that is because we don't really have any knowledge of the student's background. We don't have any knowledge of what their academic standing is. And we have things in our policy that says in order to be a student athlete, you have to, we have higher, we have high expectations with them with regards to their behavior. We have high expectations with them with regards to their academics. And so, this, this is something that I will tell you that I've spoken to Dan Trudeau when he was time in athletic director. He's never allowed a student to participate in athletics, and, and I certainly have never allowed a student to participate in, in any aspect of a, a school-sponsored club or, or sport. And so, my recommendation is, is to delete this particular policy. And I believe that concludes all of the policy recommendations. Again, this is a first reading. The consensus of the committee, the subcommittee, was to bring this forward as presented. But if anybody has any specific feedback in between now and our February meeting where these would be approved under the consent agenda, I would just ask for you to communicate with me directly.
Okay. Any, any questions on that before we move on? Okay. That brings financials.
I'm happy to not talk.
Okay, so in your handouts, enclosure 11.5A has the expenditures and revenue report. At the end of December, December 31, there is a net proposed net favorable position of $578,364. The majority of the proposed net projection is associated to salaries and employee benefits and tuition for magnet and agri-science. The capital improvement fund is just awaiting, actually, the documents are here since this has been written, for, to be able to go out for bid opening or to post the bid project for the middle school baseball field ADA project. The capital non-recurring fund is still holding on planning and zoning's approval for the material containment center up at the maintenance garage so that we can hold our topsoil gravel and other items for the fields. And the people services department is closely monitoring their IEPs and adjusting purchase orders accordingly for student changes. Are there any questions that the Board may have at this time?
I think it's a clarification. I think Colin mentioned that this year the state came through about 58%.
They did.
Is that reflected anywhere in here?
Yes, the magnet school and agri-science. So if you're finding the object codes would be the 5, 6, 1 object codes, which would be tuition.
But, but that's under the expenditure. Wouldn't that be a revenue?
It's not a revenue. It's not a revenue to us.
The, what the state provides?
What the state provided was to the.
So they paid directly?
They paid directly.
So they paid directly? Okay, that, okay, that's what I, okay. We didn't get it.
Yeah, I didn't figure how it flows. So they paid directly to the magnet?
Yes.
Okay, so we, when we pay less.
Correct.
Than what we budgeted.
Correct.
Because the state paid.
Correct. Any other questions? Okay, so hearing none. 11.5B is the food service monthly sales and expenditure report for December 2024. At the end of December, we realized a net loss of $39,816.31 for this year. However, December was the second month that the district did end with a gain. So are there any questions that the Board may have on this topic at this time? So hearing none. 11.5C is the Ram middle and high school student activity report. And in essence, the bank statements balance to our accounts as of December 31, 2024. Are there any questions that the Board may have on that? Hearing none. 11.5D is the short-term investment fund. And at the end of December 31, 2024, we reinvested $2,063.85 for the month. Are there any questions that the Board may have? So hearing none, we get to 11.5E. This is the reallocation of funds for the capital improvement and capital non-recurring accounts. So basically, what you have here are two separate transactions. The capital improvement fund, available funds show what projects had money left over. So basically, we're moving those funds into the unallocated that was created so that monies that are available are all grouped in one area for ease of notification, I guess. And we're doing the same thing with the capital non-recurring fund. The shades in the middle school had money left over, and we would be putting that into the unallocated and capital non-recurring. Both of these items require Board action, but whoever's making the motion has to read each project with the dollar amount.
All right, I'll make a motion for capital improvement fund 109, that we take the CIP planning, building survey amounts of excess of 2,000, or not excess, is it?
It's just.
Unused funds of $2,947.1 move that into CIP unallocated. Then we take the surplus from the security camera installation to, of $8,604.25 to the CIP unallocated. Remove the surplus from the shades in the high school media center of $59.32 to the CIP unallocated and take the tack board excess of $20 and move it to CIP allocated for a total being moved to CIP allocated of $11,630.58.
If you want to.
Well, don't I need a second on this one?
Yeah, I'll second.
So should we vote now and then?
Any discussion on it?
Discussion.
Okay, then all in favor? Opposed? Anyone abstained? Okay.
So I make the motion for the capital non-recurring fund 108, a reallocation to take the surplus funds from the middle school media center shade installation, $7,411, and move that to CNR unallocated.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Gabe Marks? Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Okay.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Enclosure 11.5F. So this is as per Board policy. We bring transfers, the appropriation transfers, to the Board approximately quarterly. And so, these 33 transfers require Board action. The 33 transfers total out to $585,994.66. Are there any questions that the Board may have before action is taken?
I, I brought up to Colin, I assume you saw it too, the, a problem not with the, the transfers themselves, but the report we get is a voluminous thing that doesn't tell us as much as it'd be nice to have and, and gives us a whole lot of information that I don't think we care about. Would love to at some point revisit this. I'm not saying right now. I gave a suggested format, which is basically a six-column journal number, date, fund from, fund to, amount, and comment, a reason, which I think would be a lot easier to understand. And I understand from Colin that there is, this was a serious problem some years back, that they started going to this, that for whatever reason, people, the Board was not happy with just getting a summary report and wanted to see the details. I liked seeing the details too, but I would like to see them in a much more easily digestible format. I don't know if our ERP system can generate reports like this. Colin's on, like, he didn't think so. But if they have exports of data that we could format, I'm a programmer and I can do that sort of thing. I do it all the time. So I would just like to at least consider it at some point to make better reports for this. So I just want to behind, you know, in our eyes to see if this is really a, a good one. Like, if we looked at number journal entry 71 in that document, knowing what could transferred to where and the others, it looks like, you know, after a while, I can read it, say, yeah, there's two transfers from unallocated personnel to two different places. Then one transfer in from facilities to allocated personnel. But it's hard to read. There's five lines in there for this, even though there's three transactions. It's a weird combination, but, I mean, you can do it. You can, you can spell it out and you can figure it out, but it takes some thinking and some doing when we'd like to just glance at it. But if, if they can't generate a, a report like I'm looking for, and they can't give us a feed that we could convert ourselves, then we're probably out of luck. I just don't know if they have, you know, if they, I assume they can export data into various formats. Assume you can get Excel spreadsheets out of them, for instance, and other, lots and lots of Excel spreadsheets, probably. But I'm just wondering if they could for, you know, give us a, a format that, I mean, I, as a programmer, could, I mean, I as a programmer could could say, hey, here we go. Get, get the thing feed into here and here's your nicely formatted report.
So I, I, I'll just kind of summarize. Scott and I had some correspondence about this and basically, you know, I don't know if there was significant. I wasn't here when the request for the more detailed information was made. But I don't know if it was significant concern, but I think that from, in a nutshell, what had been provided to the board was that summary memo that, that is at the beginning of these individual budget journal entries. And so, I believe the board about six or seven years ago said, hey, you know, for the sake of two purposes, we want to see that those transfers are being made, made and we want to provide transparency for the general public that, you know, these financial, these financial changes are, are taking place. So that, that was something that came up. The district was responsive of it and, and then started including the budget, the individual budget journal entries to demonstrate each of the journal entry numbers. If the board, if the consensus of the board is that you would like a change in how information is shared with you all, we will comply and we will do our due diligence to change the, the the format, change what is provided. That is, that is our, that is our administrative responsibility is to essentially give you the information that you want and preferably, to your point, in a matter that is preferential to you, right? I just said to Scott, it just has to be, we have to be given that directive by a board all due respect, not in, and he, and I know you know this, just, it's not an individual member of the board because I could have one member of a board saying to us, hey, we want you to do X, Y, and Z. And then that board member could leave and then the next board, another board member could come on and say, well, I don't like it that way. Or, or one person could say, well, I want it this way. The other person say, well, I like it the way it is. Doesn't bother me. I perfectly contend with it. And so the reason that the, the, the format that we give is literally just taking the report from the, the, the financial management system is, is it, to be perfectly honest with you, it does two things. It reduces the possibility of human error. Right? Because if we can't get the report in the, in the format that Scott is recommending or wants to see, there is a human element towards taking a spreadsheet or cells from a spreadsheet, copying, pasting and creating something that doesn't exist. And that increases, or at least I should say, it creates a possibility for human error. And I don't like human error. I, I avoid it when all, when all, at all possible, right? And so, so that's, that's the purpose. That's one concern that I have because if we could just do it, we would just do it in the, in the, in the, in the program itself. And then, um, the other thing, if I'm, if I'm being fully honest is, is I, I am, I am always conscientious of placing additional administrative, administrative burdens, as I call them, onto staff, whether it's, whether it's Eva, whether it's a building principal. As I noted to you earlier, I'm conscientious that the, the partnership with Columbia has, has placed a lot of responsibilities on Penny and the high school administrative team. That concerns me because she has enough administrative responsibilities without the Columbia partnership coming into existence and all of the work that goes along with it. Again, we're excited about it, but it's just, I always try to, this is going to make me sad, hopefully it doesn't happen. I always try to protect the people, like the people that I work with. I don't want them to be overly burdened, overly taxed unless, again, if you all as a, as a consensus of the board said, this is what we want. We will comply with that. If, if that is the directive that comes from the board, that is certainly something that we will comply with. How we get to it, we'll figure that out. Like, we'll figure out the best mechanism to do it, whether it is, you know, engaging with a, a programmer or whatever the case may be. We will get to what the board is desirous of seeing with regards to report. We just need to be given a very clear directive by the board as, as a group, as opposed to, again, respectfully, as opposed to an individual member of the board saying, well, this is what I'd like to see happen. And Scott and I have a good relationship. I can say this. He understands it. It's not anything against Scott personally. It's just that that's how the system works.
Right. The thing I was suggesting though is that I can volunteer some services if we decide to do this. We're looking at it.
I, I indicated this. I don't know if you had a chance to see my email. You're, then you're getting into a, a gray area because you as a member of the board then are being involved in creating like in, in what I would consider to be an administrative function. So I appreciate it and maybe it'd be something that we could talk to you about, but I think I can't, I can't put us in a situation where I have a member of the, a member of the Board of Education that is now a part of the process of creating reports for the board. I just see that as getting into a world that doesn't fall under the responsibilities of a board member.
Right. This is just me.
I understand that, but, yeah, I, I, I understand, but you
No, I understand, but I, you know, I would like to see a, a more readable format for this and that's why I'm willing to volunteer my time for it if, if we get to that point. I, I don't want to belabor it here. I wanted to bring it up. I want to talk about it again at some point, but I, I don't want to try to come to a decision tonight on this. That's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to sort of, you know, I like seeing the report and everything, but some of it is a little bit opaque to me. So for example, if I look at journal entry one twenty three, it looks like a lot of funds from a lot of different accounts move into the unallocated.
So we're all in one fund here. So just so you realize that, so
But they're all
A lot of accounts in that fund.
Right. And so they, but they're moving, there's all those accounts, they're all moving to one, right? That's what I mean. So it's a little hard to sort of see that. And, and that's the, that's sort of the understanding of, we're just, we've got this sort of bucket and it's got all these sub-accounts that we're moving, but it's not clear to me like why we have a nine cents that has to move somewhere. I mean, I don't. So I, I just thought I would like a little deeper understanding of what actually, I mean, why do we bother with nine cents worrying about where that?
Absolutely.
So so yeah, you know. I either do it now or I do it at the end of the fiscal year, but all salaries and benefits get rolled up into the unallocated account that are, that is part of every fund structure that we have. We have an unallocated account.
Right.
So for reporting purposes, we clean out everything. So all purchase orders get closed out, anything. So again, we cannot over expend any one object code. So each of, so fund one hundred, which is your operating account, is made up of different object codes. Your salaries, your benefits, your purchase services, um, so on and so forth.
Right.
So you can't, I can't over expend any one of those one object codes. So what I'm doing is I'm moving money for folks. We have conversations to say, hey, I need money to be moved here. We have lots of, so that four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which is fund twenty three, we have lots of open, available funds. So rather than it's sitting in where it is, we move it up to unallocated for transparency. So everyone can see that those funds are not spoken for.
And then they could be used.
So I, I think, um, if I can up this up, I think what we need to do is do the motion to do the transfers. And then perhaps we ask the finance committee to take a look at how the reporting is done and if you know, let that committee kind of come up with, um, next steps on, on how they want to handle the, the reports. Does that make sense for everybody?
Makes sense to me. I can forward my suggestion to the, to that committee.
Okay. So then we're back to, do we have a motion to approve the transfers as presented totaling five hundred and eighty five thousand, nine hundred and ninety four dollars and sixty six cents?
I'll make motion.
Scott's first, second?
I'll second.
Amy Romanchak is second. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, so can you just pop those things?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Thanks. All right. So now we are up to committee reports. Facilities, safety and transportation.
So for facility, we met January thirteenth where we finalized the capital budget. Part of that discussion was, uh, down selecting the options for the, for the track, which are reflected in the, the budget proposal that Colin put forth this evening. The committee gets together again on February eleventh. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Finance, audit, compliance and insurance.
So we met with the facilities committee that helped put together the capital budget. So that's the latest thing. We will take up this issue that we just spoke on regarding the these transfer funds, although it may take the backseat to the budget.
Yeah, okay. Negotiations?
We successfully have concluded our negotiations with teachers.
Congratulations. And policy.
Carrie's not out, Scott, so maybe you want to speak to her.
Not very much.
Oh, yes. I, I, I can, I can tell, okay, Gabe.
Yeah, I mean, was there any particular things we should mention or, I mean, just the typical, you know, we, we've been moving through policy revisions and changes as we have been the past several months and years. Keeping the train rolling.
Okay, and then just after programming communications. You've not met, okay. And Carrie's not here for facilitators. So that brings us to the informational items, um, calendar of events.
So, uh, you know, some of the student representatives on the board mentioned a few things. There's a grade eight parent night, grade eight transition day, which is an opportunity for our eighth graders at the middle school to come to the high school, get a tour of the building, hear from counselors, staff. One of the things that I'll note about the high school is we do an early graduation for any students who have completed the credits and earned the credits that they need at the conclusion of this first, at the last first marking period. We actually have a, an early graduation ceremony. We always offer it to the, to the students and their families. And that is actually going to be on February twentieth. I'll send an email out to all board members to remind them of the date. It's at two thirty at the high school. It's in the, it's in the library media center. There's somebody who is a guest speaker. And, uh, just, it's, it's, it's a really neat intimate event that I would encourage anybody who has the ability in their schedule to come, to come to that. It's, uh, it's, it's a graduation, but up close and personal for, for a small number of students. So, we do have a, a, a middle school students who are going to be having their winter concert in the beginning of February, which I can't believe it's almost the beginning of February. And, uh, that pretty much covers it for calendar of events. The next one is just the disciplinary information. One of the things that I just wanted to note, because a, a board member had asked me about it, is that when we look at the disciplinary information, we're always looking a month back, right? So we're in the month of January right now. So no, there's no disciplinary information for the month of January because we always wait for the month to conclude. And then we report out, so in February I'll report out disciplinary information in January and it just kind of works backwards that way. But again, that is in the back of your packet. And that concludes my informational stuff.
Okay. So now, um, the, the next thing I may add is executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. Do we have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's evaluation?
So move, favorite?
We, we also want to move to, by challenge.
Yes, I moved.
So Gabe was first. Second?
I'll second.
Joe, Coletti, all in favor? Anyone opposed?